All right, uh, good evening. I'd like to call the, I don't even remember the date because my phone's over there.
Twenty eight.
October twenty eighth, Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Uh, we only have a single agenda item this evening, uh, which should be hopefully relatively quick. Um, in our previous, well, our previous meeting, we had, uh, gone through the scoring process and awarded a bid, uh, one of the project, I guess, uh, bidders, um, actually put in a formal objection to it because, uh, it would appear that there was a mathematical error that was done on the previous scorecards. Um, Matt has taken the opportunity to have a conversation to get some guidance from the Inspector General's office. Um, ultimately, there was a tabulation error that was done in scoring the score sheets. The option that we have sitting in front of us this evening is we can take our previous score sheets, uh, go down through each item based off of our previous scores, tabulate those onto the new sheets, um, recalculate and see if we were correct in our math and points were awarded to the proper, um, participant in the bid. Um, the other option that we have as a board, um, whereas this is kind of new, is, uh, we can reject all bids and start the process over again.
That's from the Inspector General?
It's kind of a new area for us, but the issue that we run into ultimately is a tabulation error that had come through. The math was incorrect on a sheet.
What do you think, Mike?
I'm inclined to throw it out and start all over again.
Rich, uh, if we were to do that, if we were to throw that out and start all over again, um, I don't know what my question is other than does that, um, are we, are we still under threat of litigation? By either party?
Yeah, Tim, I think, you know, no matter what step you take, somebody is always gonna threaten you over this. So, the big thing is just trying to get this straight in a way that, in a way that everyone feels is fair. Um, you know, right now, you've got a situation where the, the results are wrong. Um, you know, and, and if you think that the, the way to resolve the problem is rebidding it, if you think that that's the most fair way of doing of correcting the mistake, then that's what you should do. You know, this is all out in the open. If, if someone wants to sue, um, you know, what we're talking about right now will become part of the record. I assume we'd introduce a copy of this, um, meeting so that the judge could hear that we're just trying to do the right thing here. Mistakes happen, uh, the, the key is to address things in a way that yields the most fair result that we can come up with i- i- in the circumstances.
So, Rich, one thing, like, a, a point that I wanted to bring in is that there was a potential third bidder, uh, initially on this property that missed the deadline of actually submitting the bid. And as these processes have kind of gone through, uh, our iterations, that third bidder would then, i- if we reject all bids and start from scratch, he would have the opportunity to bid again. However, uh, he has the opportunity to bid again, knowing what the other two bidders have already placed for a value on the land.
Well, that's true, um, and, uh, yeah, I mean, that's an inescapable fact. Uh, on one level, we wouldn't be rebidding it because the third bidder, non-bidder, I guess, uh, messed up. I understand he was running up the front steps and was just moments late. Well, too bad for him. Uh, but, uh, you know, if in view of that, you think it's more fair to just simply, uh, correct the mathematical errors, um, and go with the current bids that you have, that's fine.
So, I just wanted to throw that on the record. That was my, my only reservation on rejecting all bids is, in essence, we're going back to the beginning of the process, meaning that it is now an open bid and that the third bidder would have the opportunity to come in again.
Or fourth or fifth?
Yeah, I hope it's a backup.
So, and it does, it would put the two current bidders at an unfair disadvantage, I think. Hal, what are your thoughts?
I don't, I don't know if it's really playing to the studies from scratch, everybody's got a level playing field, uh, uh, the people that facilitate these, uh, previously, you know, they want to boost their bids up and uh, I don't know if that's just positive nearly because, you know, they know what the other two bid. We could set different criteria, I think, is, is that right, uh, council?
Yeah, and, you know, Hal, one thing that crosses my mind as you say that is, and Matt, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the bid documents did, um, allow the town to, uh, uh, reject any and all bids, uh, or cancel a bid if it's in the town's best interest to do so. Uh, that being the case, uh, if you think it's in the town's best interest and the bid has not been awarded, then, uh, you're within your right to cancel.
What did we do two weeks ago? Did we award?
Two weeks ago, we declared, uh, w- we never actually entered into a contract. Matt, you could help me out with this one.
I'm gonna go up where I can be heard quickly.
Yeah.
A couple of quick things. No action has been taken since you voted. So, the town hasn't obligated itself or, you know, entered into any formal legal agreement with any other parties. My recommendation to you would be to actually slow down and take a couple of very formal steps. One would be take up the protest and agree or disagree with the protest. If you agree with the protester, that, and again, this is not a tabulation error. The math was right. There was a category that was scored that wasn't on the score sheet or a misunderstanding about how many categories there were. So, to be precise, the Inspector General's advice is only, if since you scored all the categories that were on the score sheet, just re-add the properly scored categories and leave off those two score sheets that gave points for a category that doesn't exist. That's approach A, all right? But I think first and foremost, and as a matter of parliamentary procedure, what you have is a motion that you approve three to two to award to someone. You gotta do something about that before you can do anything else. Now, on its face, I mean, this, the, the reason why this is hard to escape is because the score sheets have numbers on them and when they were analyzed and added up, you know, clearly the protest has merit. There's really no way around it. There are points there that shouldn't be there. So, but if you do that, then you've, you've basically said, no, we're not awarding, that takes away the award. Right? And now you're kind of back to where you started and you can make your decision from there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm following it.
And yes, Rich, that language was in the, the RFP.
Yeah, well, that, that, I, I assumed you would be mad knowing you. Uh, the, uh, and the thing here is that the fact that you voted three to two to issue an award, well, uh, don't let it run out and saying, you've got it. And in any event, um, if the rule was that every time an award had been made, it's, uh, it can't be protested, then that's one thing. But, uh, where you do have a protest and where there does seem to be an obvious error, uh, what's the point of having a protest if you can't undo an award? So, uh, I, Matt, I agree with you. Uh, step one would be to decide whether or not the protest had merit. It sounds like it did, so perhaps a motion to that effect, a second discussion if any, and a vote. Uh, and then, uh, if that motion passed, then another motion to reconsider the previous vote of the subject, uh, the one that resulted in the three to two vote, you have move to reconsider, uh, second discussion, all in pride. That's back on the table. Uh, move to rescind the previous, uh, vote. All in favor? Aye, a pro. Okay, so it's rescinded, and then you're at the blank slate point. And then, that's where you make the decision about whether you want to go through and regrade, uh, the existing submissions in view of this new information and apparently, uh, misattribute to, oh, links to, uh, a criterion that wasn't a criterion. Or do you want to just start the scrap, reject the whole bids and start over again?
So, I guess we start with the protest part of it.
Kind of make a motion that we accept that an error has been made. Is that the proper motion?
That the protest has merit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it probably does, I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have a motion that the protest has merit, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Hal, any thoughts?
No, I think this is the first step.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any discussion at all wanted or merit on this? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So, that passes four to one. So, it leaves us with.
Oh, Kevin.
Yes.
I have two roll call votes, please.
Ah, all right, thanks.
I'm sorry.
You is aye.
Bone a nay.
David's aye.
Morris aye.
Cortez nay.
Okay, so we have a roll call vote, still landing at four to one. So, I think that brings us to the next point of how would we want to proceed?
Don't we have to rescind our previous?
We would have to rescind the previous award or vote the three to two vote on it.
Right, move that, we rescind that three to two vote to issue an award?
I will second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You is aye.
Bone a nay.
David's aye.
Morris aye.
Cortez nay.
Again, we have a four to one vote. So, that brings us to how would we like to move forward with this? Under our options, would we like to try and re-tabulate based off of the existing proposals sitting in front of us? Or do we wish to reject all proposals and go back out to bid?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, politely chime in for one second, please. Uh, Rich from Flying Goose. Um, isn't the, um, I read somewhere in the scoring tabulation rules that it's actually an average as opposed to individual, uh, scoring? Which in that case, I believe that Flying Goose would, would still come up on top for the scoring. So, it was an average across the board as opposed to individual. Not sure if that's something you can look into.
Was it an average score, Matt, or was it overall high score?
I think it took pains not to make it average, well, does anybody have the?
No. No.
Do you remember what beans it's on?
I, I don't know.
I just like, we need to take the approach that's the fairest. Based on our knowledge of embedded errors, I think.
Well, I think the biggest error is points going to a section that don't exist.
Yes.
I mean, they, it's one of those that you can back those out and try and re-tabulate or these are the exact same on the score sheet that was provided. It makes it pretty clear, these are all the sections that we have. And then you put your point score into there coming up with a total and then we sign on the bottom of it. Because if we choose to go that route and it gets contested again, at least there's a document there so we know people are putting their name to it. Or like I said, it's reject all bids and start from scratch. My only concern on that is, you know, understanding that everybody has to come back to the table is it adds significant more time to a project that we've been trying to get put to bed. And I still see it puts somebody at an unfair advantage, I think. And it puts the current bidders at a disadvantage.
I think they are on a level playing field because they've seen scoring, they know the price.
Mr. Chairman, the, um, our attorney's on the phone. The link is going to the planning board meeting. So, he's wondering if we can put him on speaker in the middle of the table?
I can, I can actually send you the other link if you'd like.
I, I think we're okay, it's up to you, but I think that he can just be on speakerphone in the middle of the table at this point.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is there a microphone where you guys can record there or?
Yeah, all above, so.
You're, you're gonna be better putting him in there.
Yeah.
Then his voice is gonna come over a while.
Yeah, it might be better served to get him, let me forward you the link.
Sure.
Yeah.
Dan, we're gonna get this.
That's what I would need right now.
Okay.
Dan, can you hear me?
I can, yep.
Hello, what's up?
And what's your email address?
Uh, it's G, is it Daniel?
Yep.
L, S, S, N, A, M, at Prince, P, R, I, N, C, E, Lobel, dot com.
L O B E L?
Yep, L O B E L.
You backwards?
I dropped off, yeah. Well, Rich here, just a question. Uh, if points were misallocated uh, to a criterion that... Uh, but, if, if points were allocated to a criterion that didn't apply, I don't see how you could average, uh, what was left.
No, everything was scored and then there was an extra score.
Yeah, I, I don't think you could go the, uh, average route if you've got an extra score in there.
No, you're eliminating that.
I see.
There's not, that extra category is gonna be taken out, it's not part of the decision rule.
I see, I understand that.
It should be at the top of your inbox.
And you're left with the, what would have been the correct, uh, score. Do I have that right, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, bearing in mind that we wrote this god knows when, like, ten thousand issues ago.
Yep.
I will read what is written in the bid package. The rating system that will be used to determine which proposal is most advantageous to the town is discussed below following the minimum requirements. The board will average the scores of the five raters to arrive at one final score to determine which proposal it believes is most advantageous to the town of Douglas. The Board of Selectmen will award the property to the proposer who provides the town with the most advantageous combination of purchase price and the use of the real estate. That is the rule that you published. So, you really don't have a choice. You should take everybody's scorecard back and you're actually gonna have to do some division, addition and division to arrive at an average score.
So, we can still do that without having to go through a new scorecard and all the other gyrations?
You're gonna follow the rule that was published.
Okay.
Of the rest of the discussion in the RFP is about how each individual score, each reviewer would assign scores to the categories on the score sheet. So, there's nothing in here that contradicts the concept of average. We never use the phrase total. We, we may have verbally, because we were under that impression, but I don't, it does not appear in writing anywhere. So, the only thing that's in writing about your decision rule is that it would be average.
And that's what you should do.
You have to.
But Matt, I'll just suggest that the forwarding sheet is altered, that copies of the original sheets be maintained.
Yeah, we have ample copies of the originals.
Great, just so we have a good record, thank you.
So, if that's the way the board goes, this is a perfunctory mathematical issue.
Okay.
Although, given our track record, maybe the two of us could use a separate calculator and make sure we come up with the same results. Where's Gene when you need it? I'll go get my phone.
All right. So, on a, so we want to take a copy of all the original score sheets? And then we knock out where people had awarded points to the description section? Take the remaining scores, add them together for each proponent and go that route.
Keeping the original scores?
Yep. Or?
I have mine here, I don't know if you guys have yours.
I don't.
I don't.
We have copies of all of them, multiple copies of all of them. Or, I mean... Yes?
Sorry, uh, and sorry, sir, thank you very much for sending over the log. Uh, may I address the board for you?
Sure.
So, um, just wanna make a couple of comments hopefully. Um, I, I did, so I looked broadly at the RFP and, uh, you know, my ruling of it is, uh, is that it discusses the average of the scores. Uh, and so I went through all the scoring cards, eliminating the first row, if you will, that folks, folks put a score in for a category that didn't exist. Uh, and then ran the averages, uh, out of that. And even with that calculation, the Flying Group, uh, averages at one eighty-one point three and Z and T averages at one seventy-nine point six. So, by, by one lap, uh, it's very clear that Flying Group has, has won the RFP if you base it just on averages.
Yes, sir.
Cause you're taking your add all by scores and dividing by five and, uh...
He's probably right, but before we trust a lawyer to do math, if this is the way you wanna go.
Well, let's...
Hey, listen, you know what res judicata means, but I'm not giving you a financial model, no way.
That's fair.
But Matt, be careful, how many lawyers have you got? Several.
I know, and you might all disagree on what res judicata means.
So, I guess in front of the board, how do we feel about taking the existing score, scorecards that we'd already filled out? We eliminate any points that are issued to the description column regardless of who they were added for? Take the finalized scores off of what were actually qualified sections to receive a score and determine a winner that way?
It's a way to go, I, part of me would like to scrap the whole thing, call this a bad nightmare and start over.
It's actually kind of important, I hate to be a pest. At this point, if you're going to have a discussion, it needs to be a motion on the floor with a second.
Gotcha.
Because if the group is divided and someone abstains, a negative vote has, a tie vote has a different effect.
Makes sense.
Motion fixed.
So, I'll make a motion, um, that we go through the exercise as outlawed, outlined in the original RFP for averages, omitting scores on the original score sheets, uh, that are tabulated under the description column, uh, on the scorecard.
I'll second it.
So, the motion's been made and seconded now.
Totally.
We can discuss. I don't think it's a terribly bad model to go with as we're using the original data and criteria that we had used to award the points in the first place. What we are doing is taking care of it, if there was a tabulation error, and removing any points that were thrown on for a description category that shouldn't be there.
Again, I think that's one approach, and I second the motion so we could discuss it. But does it flawed the process to the point where it's, you know, it's going to be deemed unfair?
Well, I guess...
And is it fairer to sort of start over again? I think the question is about fairness.
I, I think regardless of which avenue that we take, there's a modicum of potential unfairness that sits there. You know, it's just one of those things, it's, you know, like I had said, everybody of the, we reject everything, go back out to bid. These folks all know what the other one's bid. There's a third guy out there that doesn't know what either one bid.
But they, well, they have access to that information.
They do, but I mean, it would be, if I was sitting there as, you know, party C that missed it by sixty seconds, I'd walk in with a half a million dollars and be like, there, I just smoked you all. Because if they come back in and say, all right, I went from two thirty-five to two fifty, and then somebody went from two fifty to two sixty-five, there's still a huge delta that's sitting there between them. At least that's how I see it. Because it's the differential between the high bidder and then the next following bid as to how you're giving the, the points away.
Mr. Chairman, one of my thoughts was that the criteria are fairly involved and somewhat subjective. To start over again, I would probably come down with about two criteria. One obviously would be price and the other might be, you know, revenue, could, revenue after this, which one we believe in. It'd be a combination of those two, but, um, just my thoughts. And I mean, we did put into this fact that we do have a right to go back and reject all, all bids. And I mean, we did put into this bet that we do have a right to go back and reject all bids, so not like we're... And I think the fact that, that we know the bids already, um, I don't know if that's a positive. And that from what we have from the town standpoint, we can get more money and a higher bid, that's good.
I think that was kinda a piece that I had with this, was the subjectivity of it. I think I submitted, um, after a fairly long review of both packets, um, the correct score, but in the back of my mind, knowing full well that some of these things were either estimates or, um... As a fluff, we'll call it, that, you know, I, not trained to decipher, um, you know, did my level best, but I thought maybe the RFP could have been a little cleaner.
I mean, no matter which way we choose to go forward on this, it really does not put the town in a good light right now, at all. Uh, I know that one of our biggest things that we've attempted to do all along is to say, you know, hey, Douglas is easy to do business with. And we get into our first opportunity to sell off land via an RFP, and it turns into a painful process. That doesn't please me at all. Um, because I think it's actually the polar opposite of the message that we've been trying to deliver. I mean, a municipal bid's a municipal bid, they, I've been dealing with them when I was with Comcast for years, they all look about the same. And some of them are up to subjective value, others, when you're looking at, look at overall value to the town, you know, looking at one aspect of the business that I think is where some of us went a little awry on that. Is you look over total revenue to the town, which is, if it wasn't a marijuana business, take that three percent off the table. What are we getting in property taxes? What are we getting in real estate value? So, there was a lot of things that we had to kind of look at, and the biggest thing I think is, if there's questions on the subjectivity on the RFP, we should probably clarify those before going out to bid. Or understanding really the intent of the question before we receive bid packages and start moving forward. But I mean, there's a lot of things that we can sit here and woulda, coulda, shoulda all day. What we're sitting here with is, we have two valid bids that are sitting on the table, uh, there was tabulation or mathematical errors that took place. Even down to the award, we weren't looking at an average, we were looking at an overall score, which again...
Which was another mistake.
Another mistake. So, I'm, I honestly don't know what to do, I just know the more we sit here and deliberate on it, if we kick it back out to bid, it's more time that elapses before we actually start to realize some revenue from this, not to mention what it does to any of the proponents bidding on it to their timeline. We're walking into the winter and construction's not really gonna happen throughout the course of the winter.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, may I address the board through you?
Sure.
So I, just, I think it's worth mentioning, uh, who are the, as I mentioned at the last meeting, uh, it's very clear to me that the board voted and approved a bid pursuant to the RFP package that they presented. Uh, the, the, the warning, the error with my client, Flying Goose. Uh, and since that vote, they have lied unequivocally to their detriment on moving forward on this progress. Uh, including hiring my office to be in negotiations on the first civil agreement, uh, working with countless consultants and engineers to try and repair the materials moving forward with the control team. The town of Douglas, um, so we feel very strongly that, that the board acted properly in awarding Flying Goose the bid. Obviously, there may have been some confusion as to what exactly, uh, the manuals were, were writing down on their course sheet. Nonetheless, the course sheet clearly indicated an average that has Flying Goose in flavor, um, of winning this RFP bid. So, we, again, we feel very firmly that the board acted properly, that there was no right to move forward, uh, on the RFP bid. And again, that Flying Goose is absolutely a considered detriment in working and moving forward on this one.
Thank you, uh, duly noted. So do we wanna have any more discussion on the current motion that's on the table?
And that motion was to re-tabulate?
Correct.
Yep.
And then do it based off of the averages that would be emitting any scores or points that were awarded into the description column.
Dave?
I said everything I had to say last week, my opinion has not changed. Do you have a box here?
No, I, I mean, we can tabulate these and go that route as easily as we could, start anew. I don't really like it.
Hal, you have anything else to add?
Well, I was just thinking, originally, I don't know if you knew before, we coined the average. We were, I voted basically on who gets the higher score in my tabulation. And I'm understanding that now we all together to see who had the, the highest bid. That bid, most points.
And the award will be made based on that?
Based on that average. So it would be all five scorecards added up, and then you divide those by five, and that would be your score.
Eliminating the extra.
Correct.
What's frustrating and particularly embarrassing about this is we were particularly careful heading into this, knowing that there would be scrutiny, and yet we awarded something to someone that, um, and we didn't even follow our own rules. All right?
There are a couple mistakes, Nick.
No.
I think that's what we're trying to correct right now.
All right, let's correct them.
We're humans, that's what happens. All right, so all those in favor of the motion on the cable, roll call vote please.
He's aye.
Donan aye.
Dave is aye.
Morse aye.
Cortez nay.
Yeah, I thought you would've had a yea on that. Oh, you're staying, okay, I got you.
All right, so the motion carries, so I will need, uh, will need to tally up all five scorecards and average them all. Which I don't think I have the old scorecards with me, I think I left...
Tim, you have all four?
No, I just have mine, sorry.
They in the selectman's office?
They're in the, uh, they're in my binder.
Thank you. It all comes down to math. While we were waiting, these are things that Suzanne needs signed. I guess the pilot agreements?
Stick to my guns, Mr. Hughes.
You're confusing grumpy with resolute.
Am I supposed to say that?
I guess, well, that's what she said, that we all need to do. All right, close those up, and I will talk to Suzanne tomorrow then, because she said I need these signed by the board.
It's a pilot, we didn't talk about it, what is it for?
We voted on it last week. This is all a pilot and a signature.
Oh, I thought it was light as well.
Yeah. It's the executive. I just do it on paper.
I don't wanna make a mistake.
So, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to scribe, or do you want me to scribe?
I can scribe.
For selectmen... I think I checked this math. Selectmen A, Z and T, one eighty-five. And Flying Goose, one eighty-four.
Okay.
Selectmen B, Z and T was one forty... One seventy-eight. And Flying Goose, one seventy-two. One seventy-four. Selectmen C, Z and T, one eighty-eight. Selectmen D, make sure I understand the label, Z and T, one eighty-six. Flying Goose, one eighty. Selectmen E, five oh five. Z and T was one seventy-five.
Do we have a calculator? Thank you, sir.
Like Sean was double checking the compi pages now?
Let me check it. Yeah, would you? So, 'cause I don't know his math as often.
We should probably confirm our scores with Matt's reading of our sheets.
That would probably help too.
Actually, I think the mine, that looked good.
What did you come up with, Matt? 'Cause I have one eighty-two point four to one eighty-one point eight.
I can do this quickly, hold on. Worth it. Nice, well, okay. I don't wanna rely on anybody else's math. So this is right.
And that was a medium?
I don't, I don't know where Mr. Glickman got his math, but we're looking at, does everybody want their score sheet back and make sure you feel like the scores I just read off are what you...
Yeah, that would help.
Who's A? No, I'll just put them up there, who's A? She double sided copied everything. B is, B and C are here.
I think A is...
Uh, it's all double sided, you can save it like a penny. Who's... Just pass the whole thing on. Hal, which one is yours? Do you know?
Say that again?
Do you know what letter Suzanne assigned you? Do you know which score sheet is yours?
No, was there, was there a letter written on the score sheet?
Yeah.
After the fact, we probably didn't see that.
Well, you can work back by elimination, potentially.
I guess.
Maybe turn it in there.
I haven't seen any letters on that, yeah.
Really?
I think my kids have pulled this a lot, sorry.
It's double sided stuff, sucks.
Trying to save the environment.
Mine was double sided?
They all are. Suzanne prints double... Suzanne prints double sided for the binders. Causes me fits.
And I'm out, I'm frank.
I'm looking right at mine, I'll stand by my score. Tim, you know yours?
I do. Confirmed.
You confirmed?
Yes.
So, based off of the math and the emitting, the twenty-five points that was issued under the header information, the tabulation that we have comes up with nine hundred and twelve total points scored for ZNT with an average of 182.4, nine hundred and nine total points for Flying Goose with a tallied average of 181.8.
Pretty cut and dried from there.
Yep.
You decided the rule, that's the outcome.
Yeah, I have the feeling that if the result is the result.
Indeed. Alright, so, based off the results of this, it looks like the bid is being awarded to GBI, actually, who was the bidder. Anybody care to make a motion?
No.
Same.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hughes, aye.
Bona nay.
Davis, aye.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, nay.
That's out of that. There's no other business that we have on this, can we get a motion to adjourn?
No.
Same.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Aye.